Good evening. Dan Mysick, Ignite Church. To read from Psalm 62, Passion Translation. "I stand silently to listen for the one I love, waiting as long as it takes for the Lord to rescue me; for God alone has become my Savior. He alone is my safe place. His wraparound presence always protects me, for He is my champion defender. There's no risk of failure with God. So why would I let worry paralyze me, even when troubles multiply around me?" So, I have so much honor for this council, for this city, for everything, all of the troubles or the worries that may appear to be there in place, and I believe these scriptures give us the answer, that we have our God, who has become our Savior, our safe place. His wraparound presence is exactly what we need, and He is our champion defender. Let's pray together. I just thank you, Father, that you are pouring out your love in this city. I thank you that you are our Savior. You are our safe place, and your wraparound presence always protects us, that you are our champion defender. I just declare your blessings over every city leader. I declare your blessings over all who are serving in this city, those who own businesses, those who serve here in this council and this administration. I thank you, Lord, that you bless and prosper this city. I thank you that you are taking this city farther than it has been taken before, and that we have a hope and a future, because, God, you have given us vision of this hope and future. I just thank you for all of the provision, all of the opportunity that is coming our way. In Jesus, I pray.
Thank you, Dan. So we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Persens, Clem.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brasshaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
And Chesney.
Thank you, and if you could join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Keister.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the beating of justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion for its approval?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the approval of the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Next is the approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting on April 17th, 2018, the special council meeting, public hearing on April 23rd, 2018, and the special council on April 23rd, 2018. Is there such a motion for the approval of these minutes?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Is there any public comment?
No.
Then we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and acted as one unless there's a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of the approval to replace on file the building permits, March 2018. Police Department reports, March 2018. Minutes from the Freeport Fire Pension Fund, January 24th, 2018. Minutes from the Freeport Police Pension Fund, January 24th, 2018. The minutes from the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners on March 27th, 2018. Minutes from the Public Hearing on the West Galena Business District, March 15th, 2018. Minutes from the Pecatonica Bicycle Path through the Third Ward informational meeting from February 22nd, 2018. And approval of Resolution 2018-27 for temporary closure of streets for the Kobe Smith Memorial Four Mile Classic on Saturday, August 25th, 2018. And the approval of Resolution 2018-29 for temporary closure of streets for a cruise night, Saturday, August 11th, 2018. Approval of finance bills payable in the total of $607,503.45, and the approval of payroll for pay period ending April 28th, 2018, in the total of $531,452.40. Is there such a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the approval of the consent agenda. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Yes.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
And Chesney. Passes eight to zero.
Girls, if you and your coaches would come forward, that would be good. Actually, if you want to stand there and face the cameras, that would even be better. That way people can see your faces.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice smiling faces. We have an honorary resolution to recognize the Freeport Aquin High School girls' basketball team in the city of Freeport. Whereas Aquin Catholic Schools encourage students to engage in athletic competition and to develop their individual and team skills. And whereas the Aquin Girls High School Basketball completed their fourth best season on record in the Aquin Girls Basketball history with the 26-6 record, advancing to win the 2018 NUIC East Championship. And whereas the Aquin Girls High School Basketball Team consists of players, seniors Maggie Bald, Georgia James, Kirsten Cook, Sedona Smith, junior Katie Lamb, sophomores Abby Barr, KK Bald, Summer Busker, and Carly Newbauer, and freshman Addie DeMichael, Maddie Hildebrand, Alyssa London, Emma Holder, Ashley Lamb, Gwen Stovall, Shirley Hanua, and Leah Wilhelm. And managers Jenna Deal and Chloe Smith are to be congratulated on their teamwork and for their winning season. And whereas individual team members, senior Georgia James received honorable mention, and senior Maggie Bald was voted second team, and sophomore Abby Barr was voted first team in the conference and third team all-state by the Illinois Basketball Coaches Association. And whereas the Aquin Girls Basketball head coach, Doral Reining, and assistant coaches, Brian Hildebrand, John Scabona, and Brad Sloan deserve recognition for the guidance of their team to success. And whereas the entire Freeport community is proud of the Freeport Aquin Girls Basketball Team for their outstanding athletic achievements, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council and the Mayor of the City of Freeport, that we recognize and commend the Aquin Girls Basketball Team for their accomplishments as exemplary members of the Freeport community, their teamwork, and their commitment to excellence, and hereby wish them continued success in the years to come, resolved by the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Freeport on the seventh day of May, 2018. Congratulations, girls.
Okay, and I will let the rest of you guys figure out who you can spend the day, and so if you would like that. Thank you very much. Is anybody receiving?
You're good? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, if Caitlin McElwain can come forward. You know, if you feel all alone, your dad could come up if he wanted to. She's good. All right. We have an honorary proclamation for Caitlin. Whereas it has been brought to the attention of the City of Freeport that Caitlin McElwain, a Freeport High School senior, placed sixth in the state in the speech event of original oratory. And whereas Caitlin is also involved in the Key Club, Showtime, National Honor Society, Fall Musicals, Band, Thespians, and the Principal's Advisory Cabinet. And whereas Caitlin has been a speech participant for the last four years, having also competed in this year at state in the prose reading event. And whereas Caitlin also competed in her sophomore year at the state level in dramatic duet acting and original oratory. And whereas Caitlin also serves as the speech team's co-captain in the role of leadership. And whereas Caitlin has been awarded a $1,000 Rotary Scholarship. This was awarded based on academic achievements. Her essay was written on the Rotary's motto of "Serve Above Self." So now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, do hereby, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Freeport, extend congratulations and best wishes to you, Caitlin McElwain, for exceeding the standards of hard work and dedication and setting an example for other students in our community, as a student and a young lady, that we can look up to and respect for her achievements. Congratulations, Caitlin. All right, now I know the next one's going to have a speech. Okay, so if I can have the Davis Mental Health come forward. So we also have an honorary proclamation that states, whereas May is the Mental Health Awareness Month, and has been observed since then, since 1949. And whereas mental health problems do not discriminate. They know no race, creed, age limit, or economic status. And whereas individuals with mental illness can recover and lead productive lives. And whereas greater public awareness about mental health issues can change negative attitudes and behaviors towards individuals with mental illness. And whereas an estimated two-thirds of adults and young people with mental health problems are not receiving the assistance that they need. And whereas one in four people experience mental health conditions, substance abuse disorders, or both each year. And whereas businesses, schools, government agencies, healthcare providers, organizations, and citizens are affected either directly or indirectly by the consequences of mental illness, and we all share the responsibility of supporting wellness. And whereas the City of Freeport is fortunate to have the Davis Mental Health Group available for assistance. Now therefore, I, Jody Miller, Mayor of the City of Freeport, by the authority vested in me, do hereby, on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Freeport, proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Freeport. And so then...
On behalf of the Davis Mental Health Group, thank you, Mayor Miller, for honoring May as Mental Health Awareness Month in the City of Freeport. Freeport City Council's continual support for our efforts to serve the community through compassionate acts of advocacy has helped make our first year a humble success. We recognize there is always more we can do to help the community and look forward to facing these opportunities head-on with your support. Today would have been my grandpa's 68th birthday, and helping us highlight the month as May as Mental Awareness Month in the City of Freeport is the best gift to honor his and my grandma's legacy. Thank you to each and every one of you. Thank you.
Okay, item number seven is a couple of reappointments. If there's no objection, we'll do this as one motion. Madam Clerk, could you please take, or could you please read this into the record?
Reappointment of John Green to the Building Commission. This reappointment shall be effective until April 30th, 2022. Reappointment of James Lemansky to the Building Commission. This reappointment shall be effective until April 30th, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
We have a motion made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Clem, for the approval of these appointments. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
And Brasshaw.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move on to item number nine, which is the first reading of ordinance 2018-27. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending Part IV Title VI Vehicles and Operations, Chapter 460 Operation Generally, adding Sections 460.15 and 460.16 to the codified ordinances of the City of Freeport regarding permits for semi-trailers on streets that are not truck routes.
Thank you. Chief Barklow.
I'll defer to Alderman Ross to start with, and then I'll certainly chime in.
Alderman Ross.
Okay, where this ordinance began is our Third Ward Neighborhood Watch. The residents in the Third Ward would like, in the area of the, you know, from the 900 block of West Carroll to the 400 block of South Carroll, they're having so many problems with the large trucks coming through that area. With the amount of kids in that area, I mean, very small kids, we're trying to prevent an accident before it happens. The other problem is that the large trucks are tearing down the telephone wires, the cable wires. So they had brought this to my attention for some time now. So what I've done is, we got with City Manager Crowe and Chief Barklow to see what we could do to help prevent this from happening. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Chief Barklow.
Thanks, Alderman Ross. This is certainly one of the success stories that comes out of a Neighborhood Watch meeting. This was brought to our attention. Of course, unless you live on Carroll Street or up there in particular, you probably wouldn't think much about any kind of comments going back and forth. But these trucks were certainly a hazard, and I would concur with the neighborhood folks up through there that these trucks pose a threat to the residents. We met, this started last summer, we met with the state police. We conducted some special and targeted patrols, because the law at that particular time did not allow for any kind of vehicular traffic over 55 feet to go through there. These trucks were 65 feet, so we were successfully stopping them. We also found out recently that January 1st, a House bill was presented that amended that, that allowed for vehicular traffic 65 feet to go on routes unless there's an ordinance that prohibited that. Working with Attorney Cox, Manager Crowe, then also I got some input from Larry McIntyre. He runs Quality Transportation. We all got together, worked on this, and we really believe that this is going to make the residents along there safe, the kids along there safe, these trucks. I get the fact that these trucks use this as kind of a shortcut between Galena and Adams, and vice versa, Adams and Galena. But I certainly think that it's going to make things safer along there.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Director Carr, do you have any objections to the proposed change?
No, I don't. I don't believe Carroll is actually designed for those large trucks, so it benefits the city.
Alderman Ross, do you want to sped up?
Well, you know, that would be a good idea, because the sooner the better. I have, they have asked me about this for quite some time now. So if we could maybe expedite this, that would be great.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, thank you. Several questions, since I drive some of those vehicles. You're one of those vehicles you're talking about, and I understand what it does to the roads, because you're looking on the average of those semis of around 80,000 pounds. And believe me, when they load them out, they want to get as much out of them as they can. The question I have is, pardon my ignorance, because I don't drive in Freeport with a big vehicle much, do we have a designated truck route? And if we do not, can we set up a designated truck route that they have to follow?
I believe that I dot designate those as truck routes. I believe that Galena is a truck route. Go ahead, if you know.
Galena is designated as truck route, so is Empire.
Okay.
As any of the state roads that we have go are designated as truck routes within the area. And we actually get additional, there's additional money that comes available with those designation of truck routes.
Follow-up, Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Are those routes posted as truck routes? And if not, can we get them posted as truck routes, so that they know this is the route they have to follow? Because many of the communities I'm in, I see the designated truck route signs, the routes we're supposed to follow, and signs like we're going to be putting up over there where trucks are not allowed in there. So if we're going to block them from certain streets, I think we need to designate with signs what route they can legally take.
We can do that. I know the state roads, state highways are designated, and that's been an issue with Galena as we go forward, blocking Galena for different events, so...
Sure, sure.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Yeah, Alderman Ross, you were talking that they've been having wires taken down by these vehicles. I do know that in the county and the state, there's a height, ComEd holds pretty good to it, but the others don't. There's a 15-foot requirement for the lines, but I know your trucks are 13.5. So I don't know, is that the same with city streets, Manager Crowe? Or should we have the, could we have a discussion with the utilities to make sure their lines are as high as they should be? I'll have to go back and check with the regulations. They're dealing with it, and particularly, you know, ComEd keeps their lines up, but I'll have to look at what the regulations are dealing with Comcast and Frontier, and the agreements that we have with them, so...
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
I believe some of the problem is, is not the truck itself, it's the stack on the truck that's catching the wires. If you notice, some of the stacks are very tall, and I've noticed that in some of the body shops I work in, that sometimes they have to remove the stack in order to get it into the shop. And I believe that might be what's catching the wires and causing some of the problem with the wires coming down. But as for the trucks themselves, they're just a little too large.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yeah, if I may, put a little something in on what you were talking about. I have noticed myself in driving these vehicles, that if you stay on the main truck roads, there really isn't any problem with the wires. But if you start going off some of these side roads and side streets and stuff, they don't put them up as high. And it is, you know, the tree branches are down further, and the wires are down further. So for a semi, I'm fortunate, I only drive a tanker, so mine's not that high. But it is, even for my vehicle, it is an obstacle course on some of those, the way they put the wires down and stuff. So, you know, blocking them from residential streets, I think, is an excellent idea, just because of that and the safety hazard. And let's face it, especially 3:00 in the morning, those things are noisy, rumbling down your street. So if I may, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second it. Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. In anticipation of somebody making maybe a motion regarding suspension of the rules, I just want to ask a couple questions. For Chief, have we, I know we've had, I get the public safety, you know, reasons for this, but have we had any recent accidents or near accidents that you think public safety would require that we need to suspend the rules tonight? And the reason I say that is because I know there's some certain aldermen that like to keep suspending the rules only for significant scenarios.
You know, we've, it's hard to speculate how many near accidents we've had, because we probably aren't reported on those. I do know it's the time of year when it gets congested, and there's, you know, a lot of activity, and, you know, maybe some of it's horseplay, and, you know, maybe they're, you know, out in the street or whatever. But I don't know of any accidents that we've had where, you know, somebody, fortunately, that no one's gotten hurt. So, you know, I just, I can't answer that.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thanks. No, I fully support the ordinance. I just was checking to see how strong of bases we did or didn't have to necessarily need to suspend the rules tonight on it. Thanks.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Along that lines, driving those vehicles, I can tell you that, especially in residential areas and stuff, the visibility from them cads isn't as great as it could be from a car. And when you start running 80,000 pounds on those vehicles, they do not stop on a dime. So especially in those areas where it's congestion and kids are running down, running around, there is a high probability that something could happen, and the driver either isn't going to see it or isn't going to be able to do anything about it. So my own personal opinion, I think that it's, the risk is enough that it would justify suspending
I think a strong argument has been made for public safety in this case, and I think the chief has dutifully involved some of the practitioners in the field, the trucking firm, and sought their dialogue in support of this ordinance. And for that reason, I don't have any problems suspending the rules.
Is that a motion?
Second.
It's a second. I think he made the motion.
No, I didn't make that motion. I'll second yours.
Okay, then, before you, we have, first is made by Keister, seconded by Ross for moving forward ordinance 2018-27. And then, we have a motion to suspend the rules made by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman Keister. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable. It must pass by a two-thirds majority. So, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the suspension of the rules only?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
Thank you. So, now before you is ordinance 2018-27 for final passage. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
And Brashaw.
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next item, number 10, is the first reading of ordinance 2018-28. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance to provide for public transportation in the City of Freeport and throughout Stevenson County fiscal year 2019.
Thank you. Director McDonald.
Thank you. As you are aware, we have Pretzel City Area Transit that provides transportation services within Freeport and Stevenson County. Part of our process is we have to apply annually to the state for both 5311 and the Downstate Operating Assistance Program. Those two pools of funding provide the resources to deliver transportation services in our area. As part of this application, we do have to have an approved ordinance by the council as part of our application packet. This year, the State of Illinois changed the application. It was a lot more cumbersome. So, this was actually, the deadline for everyone was in April, but since there's been such difficulty with the application process itself, everyone, all the municipalities who receive these funds are putting it off until May. So, that's why we're here, and we're also requesting a suspension of the rules.
Thank you. Discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Nancy, could you tell me, when there was original discussion on this, what all was happening? Have you heard anything on vehicles for this program? I mean, there were some new ones that were requested and that they were going to get in, or has this come completely, you know, months later down the line?
No, no. We did receive a new van, excuse me, bus, recently that was, I think, in January, somewhere around there. But, we're up to 14 right now, and we have one additional vehicle that's used for parts.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to move ordinance 2018-28 forward by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Chesney.
Motion to suspend.
Second.
And we have a motion to suspend the rules by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Brashaw. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable. It must pass by a two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the suspension of the rules?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin. Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Now, before the council is the final passage of ordinance 2018-28. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
That ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 11, the adoption of Resolution 2018-24. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Resolution authorizing submittal of a combined application for Section 5311 Non-Metro Public Transportation Capital Operating Assistance and Downstate Operating Assistance Grant Funding fiscal year 2019.
Thank you. Director McDonald.
Thank you again. Again, this is our annual application. The 5311 State of Illinois funds provides about 1.2 million for transportation services here, and then, the Downstate Operating Assistance Program provides about 171,000. So, this resolution is to allow for the application for the combined programs.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Director McDonald, I was going to ask you, this is a three-step process, basically, to get this grant applied for and to do all the paperwork. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, this is all part of the first thing?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman McLaughlin for the adoption of Resolution 2018-24. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
And Brashaw.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is the adoption of Resolution 2018-25. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution accepting the special warranty for public transportation funding fiscal year 2019.
And Director McDonald.
Thank you. Again, this is the third part of our application. We do have to approve a resolution for a special warranty for public transportation funding. And again, it applies to both 5311 and the Downstate Operating Assistance Program.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Any further discussion on this resolution? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Keister for the adoption of Resolution 2018-25. Madam Clerk, could you please read this? Or, I'm sorry, could you please take the role?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLaughlin.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. And item number 13 is the adoption of Resolution 2018-26. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport authorizing and approving a letter of an intent with Keystone Power Holdings.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, we were approached by Keystone Power Holdings, which is a company that specializes in providing solar power to wastewater treatment and water treatment facilities about, they feel that the setup that we have at the wastewater treatment facility meets what they are doing as a company. They believe they can save us 60% in power once installed, and this is strictly a letter of intent to allow them to further investigation into the problem, into the providing us power. I have had Director Kapanzki and the Public Works Director, Director Carr, look at it, at the setup. They are going to, and it will not impact the future work that we're going to be doing out at the wastewater treatment facility, but it can, over the next 25 years, save us an average amount of 60% of our electric bill out there.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, how did we arrive, there's a number of assumptions, but did we have somebody look to see if these are competitive rates? Or how does, how does one negotiate this without a background in this? What was the process?
So, what they did was they gave us, the solar power panels are going to be installed free of cost to the city. What they're doing is that they're getting the energy tax credits, and what they do is we buy the power from them at 60% less than what they are buying it from Ameren, because a portion of that power comes from the solar panels. So, we should always, or why I say Ameren, excuse me, ComEd. So, the power will always be 60% less than what ComEd is charging to the standard user in what's?
I just said, "God bless her."
Standard user within the city, particularly industrial plants.
Follow-up, Mayor. Manager Crowe, how do we know that 60% is the competitive rate that we'll pay? Why isn't it 63 or 68? Or how do we arrive at that number? Was that?
That was their estimate based upon, they're going to put in a 2-megawatt system out there for solar power, and that's based upon the square footage of what they can put down there. They originally had looked at it and said they could give us a 40% savings, and then they came back and said, "We can add additional panels at locations," and they gave us the design, which I had Director Kapanzki look at, and they said they believe they can create a 2-megawatt system out there.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, well, ComEd still serves as the carrier.
Where, it's actually, right now, we have Constellation as the carrier for the waste, is that correct? It's ComEd, we're buying the power from Constellation out there. But, what they'll do is they'll replace Constellation as our power provider.
Follow-up. And if they do their study and analysis and find out that it is cost-effective for them to do this, where do you see that they will mount these panels? Are these going to be ground-mounted, building-mounted?
They're all ground-mounted in our open spaces and throughout the area that we have out there. And it's in areas in which we are not going to be doing additional work out at the wastewater treatment facility.
One more follow-up. And these panels, if they are ground-mounted, these are not in that flooded area that has flooded in the past, correct?
No, that's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
So, Lowell, this is a letter of intent, or approving a letter of intent, so we're not committing to the installation of cells or panels as a consequence of what we approve tonight. This, and any such agreement to that effect would come before this body again?
There would, it's actually a three-step process. What they do is they do the letter of intent, which allows them to then come on station to do the studying and actually lay out the work. Then we get a, basically, the same thing. We have the landfill, a developmental letter, which they will lease for a percentage, whether it's $100 a month, until they can then negotiate with ComEd to tag into the system. Usually takes 18 months to two years, and then the final leasing system, it will come back in front of council. So, finally, well, you'll see the document two more times.
Well, this is not the same company that proposes all panels.
No, different company.
There are a lot of these companies out there, though.
Right. Keystone specializes in wastewater and water treatment facilities. And what they do is they look at facilities that have a lot of open area, and what they like is the amount of open area that we have around the wastewater treatment facility that they can put solar panels. We actually tried to get them interested in our water treatment facility, and they're not right. They're interested around it right now. The new facility that we're building up at Bertrand, once we get it done, they may come back and look at it, at that facility.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, this is kind of a noisy question. Now, did they come and approach the City of Freeport, or did you and Tom go out and look for them, or how did this all come about?
Well, or I'll continue.
Go ahead.
Let's see, give you a little bit of break. I, that gentleman reached out to me. We exchanged a few emails, and then, I know that the city manager is the point of contact for everything to do with solar, so then, I just forwarded it to him, and then, that's when the conversation began and earnest.
So, why there's a big, there's a big push in the State of Illinois right now for solar. What happened was, the State of Illinois realized that they were behind the power curve on solar, and there was legislation that was passed that said, "We want to become a soul-smart state. We want to be the leader." So, they passed legislation to give additional state credits, as well as the federal tax credits for energy. So, we are seeing solar boom in the state. We have, as I said, the landfill, Keystone, two different, we have two other companies that have approached us, about two other sites at the, at the airport, another facility here in the city. In fact, Steve Cox and I are working for the commercial, is Inside the City Limits Guidelines, which we will be presenting to you within the next 45 days. Some guidelines for way to build commercial sites that are not on public property. Public property is the most desirable, because they don't have to go through the zoning permits that they do for other locations. And the county last month had 12 different solar companies approach them for zoning. They approved nine of them as going forward.
Madam Mayor, one more follow-up.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, when they install these panels, I guess I have more than one question. First of all, how long do they anticipate that these panels will last? Secondly, are they prepared to do all the maintenance, and do they pay for all the maintenance as they go along? And thirdly, when they come to the lifespan of the solar panels, are they responsible for taking them apart and/or replacing them with new solar panels at work?
So, the, I'll start with the end and work back. So, they have the, they're responsible for removing the solar panels once they're done with them. That is, that was part of, will be part of the agreement. The lease, they're going to be asking for is a 25-year lease on it, and they're responsible for maintaining the plants, maintaining the solar panels, maintaining the connection into the power plant, and also mowing the ground around the solar panels. So, if they want to, some of the solar panels that are going out on farms, they're actually developing bee colonies underneath of them for wildflowers and things like that, so.
Thank you for those answers.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman McLaughlin.
Thank you. I'd note at the end of the day, this is just the letter of intent, and all these terms, we'll have a chance to review them down the road, so I'd make a motion to approve.
Second. Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
One of the things also in the solar panel setup moving forward, I go to the soil and water conservation thing, and the biggest thing is, as many of us in the city forget, agriculture is the big, is what Stevenson County is really about, as far as where the money comes in, the amount of stuff that is done. The big, one of the big concerns is just what we're doing is, or should say that opposite, what we're doing is correct. We're putting it on land that's not being used, that's tillable or anything else. There's a direct correlation to how many megs versus how many acres they need to get that amount of electricity. And everybody wants to make sure that these are installed in places where they aren't interrupting agriculture whatsoever. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
Just one more thing. I would just caution everybody to shop around, because there are a lot of companies doing these installations now, and some of the terms of their contracts are different and better, more beneficial for the municipalities. So, I would just, I would like to see some other, I know that the window for this, that the incentives expire at the end of the year, so the window for getting an agreement is closing pretty quickly, but we really ought to look around and see who else there is out there, and make sure that we are getting a competitive rate, and that the terms of the contracts are favorable. And we should have our lawyer look those, look that contract over before it comes before this body, I believe.
And even this letter of intent was reviewed by Aaron as we went forward, and the other agreement had, I always make sure that those are reviewed by the attorneys before going forward. So, what, how Keystone approached us when talking, and Tom didn't talk about this, and same thing with the landfill, they were actually giving, given our name by the state when they said, the state said, "Here's a site you got to go develop." So, that's how we, I asked that question, how they got, came in contact with us, and they said, "Well, this is a site that is the best site, so when we go out and, we can go out and approach it." Keystone does sites across the United States for wastewater treatment and treatment facilities, but, so.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
One final question to go off of what Alderman Smith was talking about. With this letter of intent, does it lock us into not being able to explore other possible options with that, or once we do this, we're kind of stuck with them until it's finished?
No, we're not stuck. This is strictly, says that they, gives them the ability and access to come into the, into the site and look at it at development. If, once we sign the lease, once we sign the developmental lease, then we're locked in.
Okay, so while we have that letter, we can still have other people come in and explore the, explore the land and?
Not for that, it's for, not for this 90 to 120 days.
Thank you.
Yeah, the letter of intent actually says for 120 days after the letter of intent, that we have, do have an exclusivity provision in there for 120 days thereafter. It renews, but we can, it automatically renews, but we can at any point say, "We don't want to renew," and then you'd be out. But, it's a 120-day period we'd be married, to allow them to do their. them to do their, their homework.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman McLanahan, seconded by Alderman Keister, for the adoption of Resolution 201826. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 14 is the adoption of Resolution 201828. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
Resolution of the city of Freeport authorizing and approving an intergovernmental agreement with the county of Stevenson regarding funding for new access road to airport.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the agreement that we had discussed and negotiated with the county. This will provide us $50,000 in September of this year, and then $50,000 next year. The second $50,000 is a payback, starting in 2020, at $16,000 a year. This will allow us, the road is set, scheduled to go to bid in August. This will allow us to proceed. The $100,000 will be due upon completion of the roads. This gives us an ability, it's really a partnership between us and the county, and it's coming out of their, their mill race crossing Tiff. Believe that this gets us, really sets us up for possible other economic development. At the, at the airport, opens up the airport, there's, opens up 37 acres out there for possible redevelopment, also replaces the septic field and run some additional power lines off the 440 power.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Yes, Manager Crowe, the only question I have is, how are we doing on the timeline on this? I know there was a timeframe where we had to have this done by. Are we well within those limits?
We are. We had to notify the state by the end of June that we would, whether we would take or reject the money.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I'd just like to take and give City Manager Crowe credit for this, for reaching out for the county, because it was one thing that was a very difficult item in our budget. And it helped solve a problem. And it's nice for the county to come forward on something that will be, also be beneficial to them.
I agree. Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I, I apologize, Manager Crowe, I was confused on the terms of this. I had reread it three times when I realized that the city's paying half, the county's paying half, but we're borrowing our half from the county and are repaying it back to them in three installments of $16,666. So for the listening audiences, that's why I repeated that, because I tell you, I read it three times and I was still confused. I'm also in agreement that this is a good thing. So thank you very much.
Any further discussion? We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the adoption of Resolution 201828. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
That is adopted eight to zero. But Madam Mayor, who was the second on that, please?
Ross.
Thank you.
Item number 15 is the adoption of Resolution 201830. Could you please read this?
Resolution for approval of engineering services agreement for MFT funds with Fair Graham for the Pecatonica Prairie Path preliminary environmental site assessment, or PISA for MFT funds.
Thank you. Director Carr.
Yes, this is an agreement with Fair Graham. Usually, these preliminary environmental site assessments are done well before where we're sitting in this project. It was originally brought up in 2014. And when Fair Graham got their original contract with McClure to do the environmental on the Pec path, they had pulled this out of it specifically. So that way, my predecessor had believed that he could use the brownfield money at the time, the grant money to pay for it. And when that fell apart, it has never really been brought to anybody's attention until last week. It is something that needs to be completed before it can even go out to be bid. So it's kind of one of those things where we need to wrap it up here pretty soon.
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Manager Crowe, how's this being paid for? At what budget line?
It's being paid out of the MFT funding.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, do you have an estimate on how much this will cost?
I believe the amount is $16,000.
And that's for the entire study for that area?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, for the adoption of Resolution 201830. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And that resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 16 is the approval of engineering service agreement for the MFT funds with Fair Graham for the Tuddy's Crossing Trailhead. Director Carr.
This is another engineering agreement with Fair Graham. For the grant that's moving forward here in August, part of it is the Tuddy's Crossing bathroom. And we have the architectural plans drawn up from winter. And this would be putting together the site plans. It's a very small thing, but we didn't have the GPS capability since our GPS equipment had broken. So by the time we would have had a contract with them, it would have been just as easy for them to go ahead and take care of the site gradient as well.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I'm not sure who was all here at that time, if this whole council was there. But didn't we already approve a bathroom to be installed at Tuddy's Crossing a couple of years ago?
This is strictly the, so we've got, Winter delivered to us in January, the architectural drawings. This is to put the engineering portion of those architectural drawings. So when we take the architectural drawings, we actually have to bid out on the engineering specs. This takes those and turns it into engineering. So you did, you did approve it, but what hasn't been approved is the, developing the engineering specs. And we've been working those with Fort Tuddy's Crossing.
Thank you.
Alderman Chesney.
Director Carr, just as it relates to engineering fees, there seems to be an increase in just overall use of outside engineering services. Is that simply because of just overall workload, or just specific to the types of things that we're doing? Because historically, we've been able to do a lot of these things in-house. Maybe this is specific to, you know, a breakdown of, like you said, the GPS. But do you anticipate there being increased use of outside engineering services, or?
I don't believe so. This, we, I mean, we just got some GPS equipment in, but we don't know how to use it yet. So by the time we would learn, we would be behind the eight ball on, on this project moving forward. Understood. Thanks.
One of the things that he has, we do have to site and locate the septic field, because this particular cannot tie in. So we're actually laying down a septic field, which is, while it's not beyond Dennis's expertise, it's not really his, his field of expertise in dealing with that.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. So I understand they have their, their GPS equipment that they're using to do this study. And do we have a cost estimate on this engineering study?
Yeah, this, they have quoted it at $2,000.
Oh, that isn't very much at all. And then you, you also, sorry, may I continue? You also need this expedited tonight?
Yes, this we would need passed, so that way they can get working on it.
This is strictly, and so because it's using MFT money, it has to have approval by council. This, I cannot approve anything dealing with MFT directly. It has to be, have council approval on it.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor.
Alderman Smith.
We are, I don't want to get too deep in the weeds in it, and I'm, I certainly don't have the expertise. But we are cognizant of the fact that that's a capped site there. And we don't want to be uncovering any sort of hazardous waste in this project.
It's been a long discussion about the type of septic tank. It's actually going to go a tank. We're not going to put a field out there. And that's the reason why we have to do that type of septic tank, is because it, we can't, we don't, we can't tie into the sanitary sewer from out there.
Okay. I didn't mean to insult anybody's intelligence.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Is this drawings and every, is this based upon what Winter's brought to us a couple of years ago, as far as what was going to be there? Because has all that been approved and everything?
Their, their drawings are complete. It's just taking their drawings and putting a site plan to it with some different environmental specs based off of any, any of the soil they dig out will have to be maintained and taken off-site and, and all that kind of stuff.
Mayor.
Alderman Ross.
Okay, I'm listening to this. But once they begin the digging, are you going to, is this going to disturb what's already there and cause a possible EPA problem?
That's one of the reasons why we want, we want Fair Graham, who did the remediation involved in this.
Okay, so they're going to test it before and then test it afterwards?
They're going to follow the same process as they did when they did the initial Tuddy's Crossing. So all the soil and all the specifications that were required then will still be required now.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, for the approval of the engineering service agreement. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll on the adoption?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Do we need a motion to suspend the rules?
No, it's just an automatic approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
And that passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 17 is opening bid, review, and possible approval for the sale of 1819 West Avenue. Manager Crowe.
So I'm going to, as we do, the clerk open, opens the bid here. We're required to open the bid in front, in open council. And then we have a discussion as to whether we're going to approve it. For reference, we, last flooding, it costs $135,000 to repair the building. So the, as we go forward, and we, it has been twice damaged within the last seven years.
Seven years.
Seven years, yes. So it, it, it would be good to get it off our hands. We do have one bidder. It's Barry Lasco has bid on it.
It's on the bid form provided by Barry Lasco with All American Cleaning and Restoration. Our bid for the property is $75,000.
I'd say Barry got himself a building.
I'd say we move forward.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I just want to say for the listening public, I'm glad that somebody wants the building, that can utilize it for a local business and keep that business local. And I'm in approval of it. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Just one question. The funds that are received from that to $75,000, if we approve it, where does that go? Does that go in a general fund? Is that air Mac or something else?
It goes into the general fund. It's already been budgeted into the general fund.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve as bid.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Madam.
Alderman Chesney.
Mayor. Manager Crowe, what tax increment is it pulling off right now? What is it generating tax revenue?
Zero. This will get it back on the tax rolls.
Okay. And we've put this out for bid?
It's, so when we put it out for bid, the requirement is, is it's got to be out for bid for at least 21 days, advertised three times in the paper each time for a week. And we've met those requirements. And it's been, we've also put it, talked about it on the radio, with, on my radio, and it's been discussed in a couple of the newspaper articles.
And we've incurred over $100,000 in loss?
We have.
Given the known floodplain that it's in.
We have.
And I would suspect the person that's in there is the person that's in there now that wants to buy this building is probably aware, very well aware, clearly aware that this is in a floodplain.
Barry is very aware that this is in a floodplain. We do have an, we went and did some remediation on there. We're still waiting for the final remediation letter on that, so.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I, just, so, one of the things involved in it also was the fact that we're still able to maintain the use of the fire facilities in the back for a period of time. Is that correct? That is still ours?
That's correct. It's, the training, it's more the use of the water hose testing. Chief, I'll let you talk more about that.
Yeah, there's a facility in the back that we use for, when we do pump testing, do hose evolutions. It's, we're able to stretch hoses back there. We do have some equipment that's stored in some back sheds in the back right now, though.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Manager Crowe, all of the maintenance of that particular building, if sold, the entire piece will be managed, even that back portion will be maintained by the?
It'll, it'll be maintained by the owner, that whole area. The other thing I need, need to bring out is, currently, this is one of our most expensive buildings on our insurance policy. This, so this will actually see a reduction as well on our personal, on our property insurance policy, since it does sit within the floodplain. And we've actually, because that, it has a 50, it has a large deductible on it. But we, not only on the amount of money that we have to spend to keep, repair the building, our insurance policy also got charged when those floodings occurred.
Final comment?
Alderman Chesney.
And all the thing that, all, all the items that you're aware of on this building, that we've put this out for bid, not once, it twice, we've talked about this, we've written about this, what is, would your, what would be your recommendation to the council?
My recommendation is to accept this bid and that, and put it back on the tax rolls, or the business out there. Yeah, the, this is the, he, I will say that it's, as per the agreement, it's leasing back, that property is leasing it, no, it says no, not to exceed $1,000 a year until we can find another training facility.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Ross, for the approval of the bid of $75,000 from Barry Lasco. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanahan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number 18 is the approval of a bid from MFT materials. Bid opening was May 1st. Director Carr.
Yes, this is our annual materials bid. It includes hot mix asphalt, some aggregate surface rock, and then the cold patch that we've been putting out. These three items I've, I've seen on the last few of our materials bids. And the pricing came in at, very similar to what it did last year, at $50 a ton for the asphalt, $6 a ton for the aggregate, and then $120 a ton for the, the UPM.
Manager Crowe.
The one thing I want to add is, we only did get one bidder here, but we sent it out to all the previous bidders on this, as well as advertising the Rockford paper and the local paper. They, this was the same bidder who came in and won it last year's bid, coming in. So we did entertain those other bidders in, but they, they did not submit a bid.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, in years past, I know sometimes we had a supplier that wasn't always able to supply on time or, or their materials. Are we able to go out and get other material if they don't have it available?
We will not be able to use MFT money on those materials.
Follow-up? Just to make sure I understand that. We have to approve everything that's MFT funded ahead of time. So if we did run out of hot mix, we can't purchase it with those funds if we had an emergency or something?
If it's an emergency, MFT will allow you to do that, and then you can just?
You can bring it back in front of council for a new resolution to approve MFT at a later date. It's basically, this is, this is a requirement to pre-approve it. And then
And then, for the aggregate surface course, I believe it's seventy-five cents more a ton.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We will need an approval if we want to go forward.
Second.
Matthew Brasshaw.
Okay, we have a motion made by Alderman Chesney is, was the motion, seconded one, seconded by Alderman Smith for the approval of the bid. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
And Brasshaw?
Aye.
And that is approved eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number nineteen is approval of the bids for the demolition of residential property CD dash zero zero one dash eighteen, where the opening bids were February fourteenth. Director McDonald.
Thank you. We have six residential properties that are included in this RFP this time. And our recommendation is to award, um, four demolitions to G and G Construction at twenty-five thousand seven hundred and two properties to Cluckner Excavating in the amount of thirteen thousand four hundred for a total of thirty-nine thousand one hundred, which is seven hundred and fifty dollars less than the, the lowest bid package.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. I'm in support of this, and thank you again for, um, asking the businesses if it was okay to cherry pick, um, pick the ones that we wanted as the lowest bidder, because it does save us money, even if it's seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's right?
Mayor? Go ahead. I'll just make a motion, so go ahead, if you've got a question.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Director, where are we gonna be at, um, for the year? Do you anticipate?
We will do as many demolitions as our budget will allow.
Good answer.
This is six starting off, so.
Long ways to go.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Alderman McLanathan.
Just gonna make a motion to approve, uh, the bid as recommended.
Second.
Mayor? Madam Mayor?
Uh, Alderman Smith.
What are the terms for the contractors for the restoration of these sites? In other words, do they, do they have as a term of the contract, are they required to make them presentable? I had someone call me and make a complaint about a demo we did, um, on her street, and she was unsatisfied with the fact that there seemed to be a, a large divot in the ground there where the house used to stand and that nobody had planted any seed.
Can I answer it? Okay. We'll be following up on those. On the, the last, uh, demo bid packet that was out, we withheld ten percent to ensure that, um, things like seeding and proper grading was completed. So, we will be going out, especially in cotton wood. I think that was the one you're, you had mentioned, and other properties, to make sure that they, they did what they said they were gonna do.
Good, thank you.
It also helps for us to make sure that they're turning in their paperwork on time, too. They'd like to get the rest of their payment.
Madam Mayor?
Alderman Clem.
Do we have the funding for this?
Yes, we do.
Okay. And second question, I had already emailed to, uh, City Manager Crowe. One of these properties is on Orin Street that is currently gonna have a, a big street party there for the naming of the street for Merrill Norman. Could we take a look if this goes through and everything else that, that might be expedited?
Sure.
Thank you.
We discussed that this morning at the, at the staff meeting to, to move that forward, so, once approved.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Ross.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Busker, for the approval of the bids as mentioned. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
And that's approved eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number twenty is approval of the purchase of turnout gear. Chief Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As you remember, last month, we, uh, decided to purchase twenty-three sets of turnout gear. This is just a follow-up. We're setting up the capital plan going forward so that we have a replacement schedule for the personal protective equipment for the firefighters. One of the things we found when I, when I came in, uh, was we were, uh, expired. So, we weren't compliant with some of the NFPA standards that govern the fire department with our personal protective equipment. Uh, so what this does is it completes, uh, the non-compliant issues that we currently have, and then also replaces the sets, uh, going forward that are gonna expire this year. And then, uh, next year, we'll, we'll be on that plan to, to do a replacement every five years, and then, uh, have two sets of gear for each firefighter. So, this gets us on that track for our capital improvement plan as well.
Thank you. Questions?
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Chief, I believe in your memo, you indicated that the bid that you're asking us to do is not the high bid nor the low bid, but it was the only bid that met all the specifications. Could you expound on that a bit?
That's correct. Uh, so we went with, uh, it's Globe Fire Equipment is the, the manufacturer. Dingus is who, uh, is the, uh, is the, uh, sales, uh, group that's selling it to us. The Globe is what we've had for a number of twenty years or so that the firefighters and the committee that was put together to design this, this gear. So, we're comfortable, uh, with the gear, how it's lasted over the years. So, we're just staying with that company. So, the order that we made last month and this order will be, uh, exactly the same. And then, going forward into next year, then we'll, we'll rebid it, uh, into next year.
Mayor?
Alderman Chesney.
Motion approved.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman Busker for the approval for the purchase of turnout gear. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brasshaw?
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move on to the reports of department heads, community development.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that our new nuisance inspector, Dennis Bonkey, started today. And I'd also like to say a public thank you to Ben Fritz, our current building inspector, who's really pitched in, um, and gone above and beyond, uh, the call of duty to fill in while we, we waited for the position to be filled.
Thank you. Public Works?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our street crews right now are pretty split up. Some of them are doing some tree removal, and some others are doing some inlet repairs. I believe today, they were over on the east side, over on Orin. So, hopefully, we'll have that buttoned up, um, for that street party. We do have the east side flooding town hall tomorrow, uh, from six to eight. So, uh, anybody's welcome to join us and, and throw in a few words when you can. We're finalizing our paving list for our MFT funds, for our street crews. And then, uh, me and Tom Kapanski have been working on finishing up our five-year capital improvement plan that we are gonna propose to you next Monday at the COW.
Mayor?
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Could you please state the, um, location of the meeting again tomorrow night?
I believe it's Saint John's Baptist.
Saint Paul.
Saint Paul.
Saint Paul.
Church, it'll be from six to eight. Uh, we'll have members from, uh, from...
IDNR, Illinois Department of Natural Resources, Illinois Emergency Management Association, Winnebago County Housing. We were gonna have a representative who, we're trying to get him back, uh, from the Illinois Housing Authority, Freeport Housing Authority be there, Y-Winnebago be there, as they, they control the Vatch program. Fairgram, myself, Dennis, the chief, will also be there, as well as several of the Aldermen.
Fire Department?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Police?
Yes, um, just real quick, just a reminder, uh, to the listening audience, it's nice weather out. It's, uh, it feels like summer. Just slow down, um, and, uh, watch for the, uh, children, and watch for kids, and kids on bikes. And, uh, we'll be seeing some cops on bikes before too long, too. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Clem?
Yeah. Uh, I'd just like to thank you for the invitation you sent to the council to, uh, go down to the pistol range to, uh, do the different situations that police officers, um, maybe, may have to deal with, whether it be a, a traffic stop, whether it be after an armed robbery, if it be something else. And it was really surprising to see what this officer has to know in a very short per, uh, in a very short period of time as to what could actually happen. You know, it's one of those things, there may be a shooting, there may be something else, but watch out, it might be, not be over yet, 'cause here's another guy, you know? But it was, uh, very informative. Thank you very much, and a great program, uh, you guys in the fire department have going on.
Thank you. And just to clarify, that was a simulator.
Simulator, yeah.
They were setting up, just a simulator.
No shots, we're fired. Our, our finance dir, I have, I have to tell this. During the simulation, Randy, the finance director, was there, and, uh, everybody had the opportunity to go through it. And, and it was Randy's turn to come up, and Randy came up, and he says, halt, this is the finance director. And everybody, everybody just died laughing. It was good. Thank you, though.
Water and sewer?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see, we have a situation of an emergency repair on Float Street. We've ordered materials, we're waiting for them to be fabricated, and we're gonna look to go and get that work done soon as, uh, the materials, uh, arrive, uh, on-site.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Uh, Alderman Ross.
Yes, Director, what hundred block is that in?
Uh, four, fourteen hundred, uh, block, south.
Okay.
IT. And that would leave us with the city manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We already talked about the town hall, just, uh, Brian, uh, just to let everybody know, yesterday morning, uh, Brian, we saw another, uh, one of our firefighters, uh, retired, Brian Bruce, and we said farewell to him, the fire department did. Currently, we're working with a couple of the, um, drainage issues, Sandy Point, we did a controlled burn out there, and we're gonna be working to get the trees cut out of that area and work to regrade the area. So, hopefully, we have the issues addressed at Sandy Point. Uh, we are working to set up a, uh, town hall or meeting with the Navajo Drive, with myself and, uh, Director Carr. Kurt's coming out, I'm gonna offer it for council. Uh, he's, or he came to Alderman Brasshaw's meeting, giving everybody a tutorial on iWorks, on how to, uh, on upload the apps, they can use it. It is available, plus he has handouts that he can give to, at the, your neighborhood watches. So, um, if you want him to come, just let him know, he'll be, uh, um, available. What we're seeing is, uh, we're seeing a lot of reports from public works side, but not as much from nuisances sides. There is two different logins. Please use that. We now have a nuisance inspector, uh, so we should be, uh, he'll be looking at those on a daily basis, so. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. I just want to draw the council's attention to, um, a grand reopening of Voices. I'm sure all of you know that Voices is very dedicated to the domestic violence victims in our area. And on Thursday, the tenth, at three P.M., they are having their grand reopening. So, if you have a chance to be able to stop over there, they're over on Crestwood. I'm sure they would appreciate our attendance. And that's all I have. Uh, Alderman Keister?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Real quickly, uh, to go upon what the chief said, yes, it's nice weather outside, the sun is out, the weather's nice, and guess what? Motorcycles are out. May is Motorcycle Awareness Month. We spent all winter not looking for motorcycles. Now, they're out there, we've gotta start looking for them. So, please, look twice, 'cause the person you keep from hitting might be me. So, please. Well, yeah, that's, that's the honest-to-god truth, you know, it's... You know, the per, the person you manage to avoid by looking twice may be me or anybody else in this room. So, uh, please be careful out there. Thank you.
Alderman Chesney.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
And Alderman Clem?
Uh, just like to basically echo, uh, what Manager Crowe said. At our neighborhood watch, Sally did a nice, such a nice job with hers, I'm gonna copy it. We're gonna have the, have the mayor and Kurt there, give, give Lowell a night off. But, uh, that's on the twenty-second, and, uh, the only other thing I'd just say is, just like everybody else had, it is spring, and it's really time to look for the kids. Once again, the kids walking home from school, uh, everything else. But, uh, we do see more of the muscle cars, that kind of stuff out, so we just need to be more safe. Thank you.
Alderman McLanathan?
Nothing further, thank you.
Alderman Ross?
Yeah, I just got a couple of things. Along with what Alderman Keister said, we also got to remember about the equipment that's out, too. It's easier just to pull over to the side of the road, let that tractor combine, just go by you. It's, it's gonna make things so much simpler for you. It's better than becoming, getting involved in an accident or something like that. Uh, second thing is that, uh, on the, uh, May the twelfth, uh, Pat Norman, who is, uh, had, asked, had the street born, six hundred block born, Dame Matthew, dad, uh, she's looking for some volunteers, gets to come out and help on Saturday, May twelfth. Now, in the meantime, Alderman, uh, Clem has, uh, got his mad men organization. They're gonna be there on Thursday for a couple of hours. So, if you can be here, us in here, or any other viewing audience would like to come out and, uh, volunteer a little help, that'll be fine, 'cause it's, uh, it can be a joint effort done all over the city, not just in one area. We can all get together, get our hands dirty together, and, uh, have some fun. That's about it, though. Thank you.
Alderman Smith?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Alderman Busker?
Nothing this evening.
And Alderman Brasshaw?
Thank you. I want to remind the listening public to put down your cellphones when you're driving your car. I almost got hit on the way here, uh, tonight, and, uh, the young lady had the cellphone up where I could see it, and I was not very happy about it. Um, she wandered right over the center line and straight at me, and I slammed on my brakes and did not get hit, and I was glad for that, and she looked scared to death. A lot of you know, the listening public, a few years ago, our niece, um, was killed in a car accident because she was texting and driving. And it was proven that the people that saw her do it, and, um, it was a wake-up call for a lot of people, including our family. And I have a sister-in-law that, uh, travels around, um, and gives talks to schools to kids that don't text and drive. Whether you're talking on the phone or using a text, it just isn't safe. Um, I also want to remind the listening public to keep your kids off the streets. There again, in Freeport, I see kids on their bicycles just running right down the middle of the street, even with cars coming, and they laugh. They think it's funny. I'm not picking on any neighborhoods, um, I see it in a lot of different neighborhoods. But it's one of those things where I think the parents need to talk to their children that, whether it's a dare or whatever, it isn't funny to the people driving their car. The posted speed limits are usually thirty miles per hour in the city of Freeport, and the kids could get hit by a car, and I would feel sorry for them, and of course, the drivers as well. And then, I had two people, not one, but two steal my thunder tonight about... I wanted to thank Kurt Sutman, um, for attending our neighborhood watch meeting and giving a wonderful presentation on the new iWorks, uh, reporting program for community development. This, of course, helps people report potholes, tree problems, nuisances. I'm probably leaving something out here. report potholes, tree problems, nuisances. I'm probably leaving something out here. But it's a very easy program to enter into a computer or your smartphone so that you can take problem, pictures of problems that you see in your neighborhoods or when you're out and about, and send them directly to the people that can help solve those problems at City Hall. Again, Kurt is willing to attend other neighborhood watch meetings with other Alder people, and I think the listening public needs to know that if they attend these neighborhood watch meetings, they get a free tutorial, plus a lovely handout from Mr. Sutman that will describe and explain to them how to sign up for that program. Thank you again, Kurt. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Item number twenty-five is public comments. Tommy.
I wanted to graduate for Special Olympics. They went to Harlem High School last week on, on the last weekend. Kelly Dawson's got first pariah, and a couple people from Freeport. I just wanted to tell you, Joey Miller.
Well, thank you, Tommy. We appreciate your information.
And who are you gonna come to, to the St. Vincent's?
I am next week.
As part of a race, but Nurses Week?
Correct.
Yeah, Patty Moore called you and told you to come.
I will be there.
And you do a good job, Joey Miller, Freeport.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will move to item number twenty-six, which is executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty slash two C one, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of a public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two C three, the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in this act, including a vacancy in a public office when the public body is given power to appoint under law or ordinance, or the disciplined performance or removal of the occupant of a public office when the public body is given power to remove the occupant under law or ordinance. Pursuant to five ILCS one twenty-two C twenty-one, discussion of minutes lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by section two point zero six, there will be action to follow that third item.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into executive?
Action.
There's a motion made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman Keister. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Keister?
Aye.
Chesney?
Aye.
Clem?
Aye.
McLanathan?
Aye.
Ross?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Busker?
Aye.
Brashaw?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.